All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody and thank you our enthusiastic bicentennial committee for amazing meeting and for coming and we'll see you soon. You're welcome to stay. Welcome everyone else. You will see me wearing this very nifty bicentennial hat. It's the bicentennial logo. These hats are very comfortable. A lot of golfers wore them yesterday. Ken and I wore them all day golfing. They're $25. The money goes to our efforts for the bicentennial which we're celebrating in 2018 in case you didn't get the memo. 2018. So please feel free to pick up a hat and leave your $25. We will take checks. Alright, we have a special presentation today with retirement of Sergeant Rose. Can we not let that happen and make you stay? No, I guess not. Will you please come forward? Chief, do you want to do the honors?
Do yours first.
My first?
Black.
No, you do. Do your thing. Sorry. Too much stuff up here. Thanks, Brian.
Their last official act.
I look at how retired he looks in his retirement outfit.
I'd like to just recognize Cheryl's here, Brian's wife of many, many years, and his in-laws are in the second row here. As I thought about how to recognize Sergeant Rose for his years of service, I noted that Brian is the fourth officer that's retired since I took over. And I noted that each of them are uniquely individual. And as I started looking back on Brian's career, I realized that he held that true. He is truly unique. And as I go through some of the things, we're going to find out why I mean that. He's taken part in just about every possible public safety mission that any one individual can take. He was hired in August of 1989 and promoted to corporal in 2003. In 2013, we had a slight change in how we were going to do our promotional testing process for the township. Basically, what it was, we eliminated the written policy or written testing process and we kind of left the promotional process up to his peers. Sometimes that's good, sometimes it's bad. But overwhelmingly, majority of his peers and his coworkers, Brian was absolutely the number one choice to be promoted to sergeant. And he was my first promotion and I think we did well with that promotion and we're holding true today. I not only commend him for his 28 years of dedicated service to the police department, but for those of you who know Brian and those of you who don't know Brian, Brian has spent equally number of years to the service of this community as a member of the medical services unit. He's Central Bucks EMS. He's also one of the original members of the Central Bucks Special Response Team which was implemented in 1989? No, 1918-plus years of service. So upon his resignation in May, he's got the longest tenure and one of the original members. He should be commended for that. So he's a member of the CERT team, a member of the police department, a member of the medical squad. He's probably seen way more things than most of us want to see in our tenures. On top of that, his wife Cheryl is a member of the Pennsylvania Wilderness Search and Rescue Team as a canine handler and also on the board. And I know that he also takes part in that. So with that being said, he's truly a dedicated member of public service to this community. You're sorely going to be missed, but we should take comfort in knowing that Brian will be out there responding to our medical calls in the community. Brian, congratulations. I think Brian likes public speaking less than I do. So with that being said, I think Brian would feel like to come over and present the township plaque.
Brian, we're going to leave you off the hook. This is a beautiful plaque that we staff has made. It's a Mercer tile. It's our seal. And it's spelled right, yes. And your name's spelled right?
It's spelled right.
Thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
I know you've been a good representative of the Department of Dawson Township and the folks that have worked with you, the men and women that have served with you, look up to you and respect you and always will. You're a legend.
I appreciate that very much.
So you should know that because I hear these things. So I do. I hear them. People come to these all the time.
Whether you want to hear it or not.
Yes, let me read this to you. "The sixth day of June 2017 by the Dawson Township Board of Supervisors acknowledging your retirement. On May 25, 2017, we thank you for your 27 years of dedicated service to Dawson Township Police Department and to the community."
There you go. It's been my honor.
You're all welcome to stay, but I'm sure you have a party to do. So feel free. Oh, Steve, you missed the presentation of the bicentennial hat which are for sale for $25. Feel free to pick one up on your way out.
More for a hundred, Steve.
Yeah, what a deal.
And Police Department, we will have these, so feel free to pick one up. Yeah, as long as you leave at $25. Alright, thank you. Wow, there goes the room.
Yeah, there goes the room.
What corner is that?
Oh, okay.
I see the little sign.
Okay. Okay, visitors or public comment? Same old, same old. Alright, announcements. We're next meeting on Tuesday, June 20 at 5:00 PM. Budget work session is going to be held on Tuesday, June 20 at 4:00 PM. Please come. The bicentennial committee will meet again next on June 20 at 3:00 PM. Mary Lou, thank you for your service. The Central Park Basketball Courts, we're going to be closed effective June 1. I mean, they're already closed. That's going to be the site of our temporary offices for the next eight, two years, two thousand years. 2017 Discount Park and movie tickets are available now, so purchase your tickets at the administrative offices. The Thompson Performing Arts Series continues this Friday with a family DJ dance party starting at 4:00 PM at the Covenant Bank Theater in Central Park. It's a free event. Leaf and yard waste recycling is the third Saturday of each month, 9:00 AM to 11:00. Drop-off site is the New Britain Road, access to Central Park. And go to our website for more information, please. The Environmental Advisory Council is holding its magnet fundraiser. And magnets are being sold in the administrative offices. They're $5. And of course, Dawson Township Bicentennial Plaque are available for purchase for $25. Alright, minutes approval is the next item on the agenda. And those minutes will be from May 2, 2017. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections, alterations? Is there motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Correspondents?
Yes, we received an email from Mr. Joe Visco who is one of our auditors. He is going to be moving out of the township and obviously he's indicating he's no longer eligible. And you will need to accept his resignation and you will need to appoint someone within 30 days.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
So alright, is there motion to accept the designation?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's effective today?
Yeah.
So should we advertise now for... Alright, hereby notify the rest of the world who are listening that we are accepting applications for position on auditor. We've got to fill this position in the next 30 days. We will post the advertisement in the paper. Make sure that's too set the application to...
Well, we're working on it.
By the time, thank you. Alright, thank you very much for that.
Nothing else.
Thank you. Find benefit, pension funds, whatever.
Yes, this is...
I skipped the page, moving back.
Sorry.
Sorry. I'm not used to double sided. Okay, reports from the solicitor.
For your consideration today is the draft ordinance that would establish officially the Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge Sewer Project. The ordinance which has been reviewed by your township manager establishes the sewer project as being on parcels that are fronting on certain portions of the road that you'll note in the roads in the first whereas clause which identifies all the affected parcel numbers. The second whereas clause identifies the specifications to date including the last revision date for the sewer project. The third whereas clause reflects the fact that when the project is finished, it will be turned over to the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority who provides sanitary sewer to the township. The next whereas clause was, I guess Stephanie's best guess on what the cost might be, knowing full well that that's not a final number. It could certainly be less. And the next whereas clause is that the board has concluded that the best way of assessing the cost is on an EDU basis for each property as opposed to a benefit assessment or a front foot assessment that has a tendency not to be fair and equal among all the benefits benefited properties. And last whereas clause identifies the method of determining the cost for each individual property owner. And section one of the ordinance itself establishes the project, fixes the parcels, and indicates that the project is in accordance with plans prepared January 1, 2015, last revised June 3, 2016, approved by the DEP. Section two is what I mentioned before, it'll be done on a periodic basis as far as the cost. Section three establishes the methodology by which it'll be done. When it's finished and it's certified as being finished, that cost will be established. The township will add its cost and then that cost will be divided among the benefited properties. Then there'll be a notification given to each property owner and they'll have time to deal with their share of the cost. Section five talks about if those folks do not make payment or do not otherwise enter into mutually satisfactory agreement, then they'll be leaned as you would any other public improvement. And section six establishes that the person to be connected has been identified as having failed to install online systems by the Board of Health or the township engineer. And section seven says this project does not include the assessment of the tap-in fees which is the treatment component of the project by the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Section eight clearly indicates that the officers of the township are directed to do whatever is necessary to effectuate the ordinance. Section nine says that you have a right to change the ordinance if you deem it appropriate after its adoption. And section 10 gives you the opportunity to settle with property owners if you choose to. That effectively is the draft ordinance that is for your consideration today for advertising only. You're not approving this. You're only authorizing this advertisement so that members of the general public can weigh in on the proposed ordinance at a later date.
I have some questions.
Okay.
It is our intention, and I'm sure the board knows this, to borrow money for this project from Penn Vest. And it's our intention as when we're at settlement for those monies that we're doing an additional, where we're doing a transfer of that loan to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority will be responsible for the repayment. Residents will be responsible to repay the loan to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Should any of that be referenced here?
No, because it's not. It's only an element of the financing of the project.
Yeah.
It is not related to the project as far as the actual construction of the lines.
It gives us, this ordinance gives us the authority to lean, to do the individual lean.
You always have the ability to lean.
But we won't be doing the leans if...
You will be doing the leans, but you'll be transferring the leans to the authority when it comes time to settle up.
I thought we were...
Not on the, no, every time we've done it in the past, that's what we did.
I thought we were transferring the entire obligation.
You're transferring the loan obligation, but not the obligation. You're transferring the obligation of property owners to pay their share to the authority. That's how they're getting paid for the cost of the project.
No, we're transferring the debt at settlement.
But you're also transferring the obligation of property owners to pay the cost to the authority.
I know that, yes, in addition. But the most important thing is that we're not going to be incurring the debt. Therefore, how can we be leaning the property owners?
But you're not going to be leaning them for the debt. You're leaning them for the... Let's suppose that each person pays $10,000. Now, that money is being provided by, in part by Penn Vest, but it doesn't change the amount of money it's assessed against each property. Just means that those people that take advantage of it or benefit by it will have a lower interest rate.
Is there anything in here that's going to prevent us from not being able to... Is there anything here that is going to prevent us from transferring any of these rights or obligations under this?
No. All you're doing on the ordinance is you'll be transferring, because you have a separate agreement already approved. It said when this project is finished, you will turn over the project and you will assign all the leans and money you recover from property owners to the authority and you're out of it.
We're not borrowing the money.
You are, but you're assigning that obligation.
Immediately.
Immediately.
So therefore, from the get-go are recovering or collecting the monies.
But the money is being used to help the residents pay the cost.
I understand that.
Right.
When does the resident have to start paying?
After the project is complete.
Sixty days for that.
So the project is completed.
Correct.
The water authority, the sewer company has the obligation. They're going to be collecting the funds from the residents to repay their loan if they decide to go that route.
Right.
If they don't pay it, who puts the lien against that property?
The township does, but then it assigns all those leans to the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, which is what we did in the past.
Okay, the most important thing is, I don't want the township to be borrowing this $10 million.
Right.
And that's, as long as this...
That's the second agreement you're going to have.
That's the second agreement we're doing.
Matt McHugh is working on.
I know. That's right. But I want to make sure that nothing in this...
Nothing in this document does any more than establishes that you're going to have a sewer project.
Right.
That when the final cost is determined, each property owner will know how much they have to pay.
Right.
And if arrangements are made that are suitable to the township or whatever, that's fine. If not, and people don't pay, then you have a right to lean and the leans are assigned to the Bucks County Water and Sewer. That's all this does.
And I think more important, shouldn't this ordinance be saying something about us not incurring that debt or that the authority incurring that debt?
That would be part of your separate agreement.
Alright, doesn't have to, we don't need to do anything.
It doesn't need to be in here. This just establishes your project. That's subject to a separate agreement you're going to have with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority.
I don't know if I'm completely comfortable, but okay. I understand what you're saying and you are the person who knows what I'm saying. I'm just the expert in contract. Do we have a motion to authorize the advertising of this ordinance?
Some more discussion. Ken, you want to go first?
Can we have a motion first and then we can talk about some more?
Okay. I make a motion that we advertise this ordinance.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright, we're still discussing.
I'll defer to Ken if he wants to go first.
Two main points or questions I had here. One was where we identify what we think the estimated cost is for the project. Why wouldn't we put in what we think it will be versus this? Or do we think it's going to be this $10 million?
You need to ask your township manager.
Some contingencies. There's a 10% contingency, number one.
Yeah, there's contingencies and everything. That was a number that Gilmore provided. It may be, it's probably on the high side, but it was the, the ordinance, and Jeff and I talked about this, indicates a engineer's estimate. That is the engineer's estimate. We have a cost estimate from Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority that they could assist in this to, it's around eight. And I hate to, a little rate note. So...
So how does that get reflected once we do know the true cost? Does this ordinance get revised or re-selected or where does that?
What you see in there when it says when the project is complete, there's a certification that the project is complete by the consulting engineer who then also provides the costs of the project. And then the township's costs are added to that to determine the quote project cost. The consulting engineer is an estimate only. So that, the assessments are not based on the estimate. They're based on the actual.
The second question I had was in the, we have here whereas the township in accordance with law intends to connect with the Bucks County Water and Sewer to construct it. Is that by law or what makes it different from us bidding this versus them?
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with how you're going to, who's going to construct it. But you have an agreement already with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority that when the project is complete, however it's going to be complete, that it's turned over to them because you have, you sold the sewer system back in the late, in the 90s. Right. So that's got nothing to do with the agreement you have with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority in the future if you have one, that they're going to build. It just means that when the project is complete, the assets will be turned over to the authority.
It doesn't say that. It says to construct its extension. It's talking about construction.
Okay, well then, we need a revision then. Let me see what paragraph are you on here?
That was page two.
So whereas, he's talking about... We intend to contract with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority to construct the sewer extension.
Okay, well then, if you, that's not what you, well, no, let me think about this because when they bid it the last time, you had an agreement with them. They bid it though, remember? But you weren't here then. But there's two ways in which they're involved. Township is not going to bid this project. You're not going to manage this project in any of the scenarios. There's two options you're going to have. One is you're going to have an agreement with the authority that says you bid it and then however the bid turns out, that's how it's going to be completed, whoever the low bids are from general contractors. Or you're going to reach an agreement with them that they're going to actually construct the project. So they're the two options. So either way, you're going to reach an agreement with them. Just a question of which scenario is in the agreement. So you will have a contract with them for the construction, whether it's publicly bid or you have them do it.
What we learned from talking to them in their presentations is that if they build it, it's less expensive.
Right. And that's why I thought it might be more easier for residents to understand if it, because this number isn't what I think the residents are accustomed to hearing.
I don't know what number they're accustomed to hearing frankly.
I think that number, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie, assume that you were publicly bidding it.
This is a public bid number, not the they would build it number.
Not the they would build it.
Bucks County Water and Sewer number is about $60 million.
Correct.
But they're not, I don't think the public has heard many numbers at all, frankly.
I think all they're going to remember is the five, four years ago or whatever.
Or the 52 million from 10 years ago.
Yeah.
I have two comments. The first one maybe to alleviate some of Ken's concern and also would be helpful if they sit in the paper that it's explained this way. That the cost of the project is one thing. What it costs at the end of the road, whether it's 10 million, 8 million, 7 million, that's the cost of the project. But we've worked diligently to get grants, to get some agreements, to get some ways of reducing this. So the cost to the resident is going to be much, is going to be less than what the actual cost is. So there's the cost of the project and it's going to be shared among other, the grant we received for one, and the bigger portion is the cost to the residents. So I'm trying to make that differentiation. It's the cost of the project is one thing, but the cost to the resident is going to be lower because of all the monies that we've...
Lower than this estimated cost, yes.
Yes.
At least by $240,000, but so far not by much.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I mean, we throw cost around and I think, and you're right, Ken, if the residents read this cost, then they might think they're paying the whole 10 million. But no, we've secured grants. The second thing is, we agreed, talking about section six, it says if your system is failing within 90 days after the completion of the construction, you have to hook up. Well, we, the board agreed last year or so that also if, not if, when you sell your home, that we want a certified environmental inspector to certify that your system is still working. And if it's not, at the time of sale, they're going to be required to hook up. So I think that should be memorialized in this ordinance that, one, if you're in the initial group that has a failing system, you're going to hook up in 90 days. If your system is working, but three years from now you go to sell your home, we need a certification or a confirmation that your system's still working. If it is, okay. If it's not, then you have to hook up. So I think that should be part of this and memorialized in this ordinance.
And we had already discussed that, what you said a year ago, and we all kind of said that that was the way that we should go with this. It's just not in the agreement.
Let me, I'm just posing the question now. Would that apply anywhere else in the township? I assume it would if there was public sewer available and somebody, you want that to work. What I'm saying is that if you wanted it to apply elsewhere besides just this particular project, you would probably incorporate that into your ordinance that mandates the periodic, every three-year certifications as far as your system. If you put it in here, it's going to be limited just to the Wood Ridge Pebble Ridge project.
Because the other ordinances for the Turk Road, Pebble Hill 3, Wilkshire and Fountainville all have it in their ordinances as adopted that when they sell, they have to connect. This is something that would be different, which was the, actually, I think Jeff, Jackie found that information and I think it was November of 2014 actually, when the board had this discussion and found that.
So to answer Jeff's question, this is a little bit different, a nuance to it, if you will, that if they can prove to an engineer that the system is working, then they do not have to hook up at the time of sale, which is what we agreed to a year or so ago.
So in short, if you're, if you're part of this sewer project, when you sell your house, you have to establish that you have a working system. If not, you have to hook up.
Correct.
Yeah, we can, but it's not in here. You just, if you just want to limit that requirement to this ordinance.
The other one's stricter. They have to soak up on sale.
But there's, but there's other parts of the township that weren't included in those projects that have public sewer.
Are there?
Yes.
Well, a lot of them, you're going to see one later on the agenda.
Okay.
They're coming in on the sale.
So I guess the question is, is whether the board wants to limit that requirement to this project, in which case I'll just add that additional language, or if you want to extend that to the township as a whole. That's your choice. We can do it, we can do it with just this project and you can think about it later and add it later if you want to the overall approach, but...
Well, I suggest we add it to this one because I would like some more time to digest it. You called it a little bit off guard, which is good, but I'd like to take a step back and in the upcoming months address that.
Alright, I'll do that.
Agree?
Yeah, need to reissue.
I'll redo it and I'll advertise with the amendment.
Okay.
But I'll send the amendment to... But I'll send the amendment to Stephanie before it gets advertised, so you all can look and make sure you don't have an issue.
This language we'll talk about, it needs to get certified.
The language will appear-
Takes out the definition of failure.
No, it adds, if you have a failed system, you have to definitely get, hook up. But if you don't, if you're selling-
What I'm hearing is either certified or it's not certified.
Now, when you're selling?
Pardon me?
When they're sale.
On the sale.
Yeah.
Is my system certifiable? The reason I'm asking this is that I've heard many definitions of what failure means. Do I need new baffles? Is it the leak field? What is it that makes it? Well, I want to get away from that, and that's what I'm saying, if it's either, you can certify it or you can't.
Well, I mean, I think that in order to be clear, we ought to be adopting the standard that will be used by the Board of Health.
Let's do that.
Because clearly, you know, they're the enforcement agency with respect to this issue. So I think instead of having, you know, township engineer says, "Well, I think it's okay." The Board of Health says, "No, I think it should be limited to the Board of Health." Because they have all the experts and they are independent of the township and they have responsibility to do so. Perhaps that how we should do it.
Okay.
Well, then, just to take another step back, at the bottom of Section 6 of the page, at the initial hookup, the township engineer makes a determination if it's failed or marginal on-lot sanitary sewer disposal. So you're saying maybe put that same language there?
I think we should just make it all the Board of Health.
All the same, yeah. I agree with that.
And then we'll do the same, what we'll say as far as the amendment is that in the event anyone who is, somebody escaped the sheriffs again or something? So in the event, in the event that you propose to sell your property, that if you are part of this project in accordance with this ordinance, then in order to, you would need a certification from the Board of Health that your system is satisfactory. Otherwise, you have to connect.
Right.
Okay, we're good.
All right, we're good. Everyone agrees with that amendment?
Thanks.
Who made the motion?
Rick.
Will you accept that amendment? Or Ken, you made the motion? Do you accept the amendment?
Certainly.
I'll make that amendment, okay.
And you accept the amendment? All right. All unfair, the motion with the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, moving on. All right, hmm, anything else?
No, I said enough, I think.
Chief?
I was kind of hoping you guys would forget about it, but since Mr. Garten brought it back to everybody's attention.
No, no one's forgotten about it.
Just a quick update on what took place the last couple of days. 8:30 was Sunday night. There was information that was developed that a prisoner escaped from the Bucks County Sheriff's Department. The escape actually occurred in Warrington Township on the other side of Bristol Road. Unfortunately, the escapee decided to make a U-turn and come back into our township. The patrol guys did a reverse 911 and requested a shelter in place. The purpose of the shelter in place was not due, and this is the problem with the reverse 911 systems, the purpose of the thing was not due to the violent nature of the escapee. It was to try to keep people in their homes so that as we're coming through the backyards in the darkness, that people don't come out and get startled by us or us get startled by them. So that's the purpose of the reverse 911 system. It was eventually lifted about 4:45 in the morning after all the police activity had ceased. Unbeknownst to me, when I got up in the morning and was getting ready, prepared to come into work, I found out that the school district canceled schools. That's their decision. I'm not going to begrudge them for canceling the schools, but it was my intention to make sure that we had a patrol officer down at Cooks Elementary School as buses are dropping off and just request, you know, keeping a vigilant on kids coming in and out of the school. As it turned out, the, you know, the escapee was spotted down at the 711 at 5:30 in the morning and probably sometime between 5:30 in the morning and when we found out a little bit later in the morning, he had been picked up. We had credible information and he was no longer in the area, which is why we called off our search again. We were able to take the father of the escapee into custody, I think it was around 6 o'clock last night. And then he was then ultimately charged and placed in the Bucks County Correctional Facility. Fortunately, bail was not that high. He was out by 10 o'clock that night. And then again, this morning, he was spotted over in Warrington Township along the County Line Road area, and again, a perimeter was set up. And he was laying low for almost three hours before he surfaced, and he was eventually apprehended around 12:44. So he's currently in the Bucks County prison.
Yay.
Moving forward.
Who, who, who picked him up? Those town, at Warrington?
It was, there was probably 50 cops there.
Oh, geez. You weren't going to let him go again, huh?
Yeah, the social media worked. It worked and it didn't work. Again, it's, it's one of those fine lines between getting the information out there and getting overwhelmed by phone calls. So it's one of those tough things. But by the time we ended up locating him, I think the entire neighborhood was out pointing where he went, so it wasn't great. The dog found him, we're going to give the dog credit, but the citizens did help, so it all worked out in the end.
I just, if I could just say a couple of things to that. First, great job by all of you. I actually saw the lieutenant going down the twisty slide at Kids Castle yesterday. He said, "Hey, you never know where he's going to be." So, but I think you guys-
Actually looking for the guy going down the Kids Castle?
Yeah, because they were looking around Kids Castle. That was yesterday, early morning, when I was over there. I think, you know, given there's been a lot of discussion around social media and, you know, the platforms and how we're using it, I would love to take the lead and even work with the TAB committee to really come up with the plans around natural disasters or emergency situations. I know for myself, I received the reverse 911 call. Now, did that go out to the entire township or just around that area? Because I was right, I'm right by Lower Satan Bristol.
Honestly, I know it was initially dispatched within a radius of Bristol and-
Okay. Which would make sense.
However, how far, it was not a consistent radius.
Got it.
That much I know. And I know that not all people within the radius got it.
Okay. So, so we-
It's not foolproof by any stretch.
Right. So we did receive that call, and then immediately I received calls, what's going on? I called the, the police department. You guys were able to let me know what was going on. But I think for us, you know, what would have been good is some sort of streamline to us putting out just something that night. Because it wasn't until the next morning after Shawfonte Borough, Doylestown Borough, Warrington Township, everybody had put out communications around this except for Doylestown Township.
That's the problem with social media. It's today's, today's incident was in Warrington Township.
Right.
It's not my place to step on their toes and put out bad information. So I'm not going to put it out until I know it's coming into our township.
Agreed.
And that's the problem we have with getting the information out. Is it good information?
Right.
Or is it just information people want to put out there?
Well, how about, you know, there's, there's a question about shelter in place. That's what people wanted to have an answer to. What does that mean? What happened? Why can't we tell people what happened? You know, why can't you tell the township Facebook page what happened so that the township, we, you know, we have the answer to it. Supervisors have the answer to the question.
I think that's, that's a discussion we can have, and I don't know that tonight's meeting is-
No, actually, I thought we had this discussion.
I mean, I think we did around Hurricane Sandy. There was, there was a lot of discussion about that because we weren't necessarily putting out the information in the way other municipalities were. But I don't think we ever really formalized anything around it.
So that's what you want to do.
And I, I think we should. I think there should be a formal process if it's a police matter, you know, you're immediately getting in touch with Stephanie, Stephanie's, because there are some things, you know, there's a fire and Stephanie emails us all and says, "Fire here, this is what's happening." But there's not a consistency with it.
My suggestion to you, and this would be, this would be my suggestion as the law enforcement agency, is I don't have the problem with the information getting out there, but it's very difficult for me, being the chief law enforcement officer in the township, to do it.
Absolutely. You shouldn't. You shouldn't be the one doing it.
Yeah, or tell, I'm the director, I'm the liaison to the police department, I'm director of public information.
Okay, let me finish. The other problem we have is the way the township policy is set up. There's very few people within this township that can put it out on Twitter, put it out on Facebook.
That's true.
Because of your own policies.
Right.
So the other thing is, maybe if you really want to get involved and streamline this is that designate somebody from the, if you feel it's worthy to put out there, come to the scene, sit there, watch what goes on, and we'll get you the information as we can get it to you, and you can put it out all day long. But to coordinate this, if you were out here on County Line Road at 1 o'clock this afternoon, you'd be shocked at the number of different municipalities there, and there's one chief in Warrington Township trying to organize all this.
No, and I, I'm not even speaking to today. I think once that guy was captured, it was everywhere. I mean, that was easy. But I, I think our, where we lacked information was at 10 o'clock on Sunday or Monday night, whatever night it was, was when I got the reverse 911 call, and I had no idea what was going on. And frankly, it had been put out through a bunch of different municipalities. We didn't post anything about it until the next morning.
And Chief, I'm not talking a minute by minute, play by play. I just want to know what, what's it about? So when people call me or text me at 4:00 in the morning, I have an answer.
Here's one thing, and I know it's very difficult because we're all in a position of authority. There is nothing wrong with saying, "I don't know, let me find out and I'll get back to you."
Sure.
There's nothing wrong with that. I do it every day when somebody comes to complain about one of my officers or a question about a criminal investigation. I cannot possibly know about everything that occurs within our police department. I do not, I try not to tell them something that's not true. Let me get back to you. Because that's the best way to handle it. If you BS them, they're going to know it and it's going to be 10 times harder. So my, and it's difficult to, to accept that, but just step back, "I don't know, let's find out, we'll get back to you." That's the easiest answer and the most accurate answer.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that, Chief. And as the liaison to the TAB committee, you can do that. You don't need anything else from us, right?
Yeah, no, and yeah, we don't, so, so I'd like to just work on that and I'll work with the committee on kind of coming up and we'll work on it together.
Yeah, because these things never happen at a, at a, the most convenient times.
8 o'clock in the afternoon.
It couldn't have happened, the one time it happens on Father's Day, last, and at much smaller scale, Sunday night and the Monday morning is our Township Golf Valley. Basically, we wear the skeleton crew around here. And it's just, what's the chances of that? It always happens, so.
But, good job.
Thank you.
Okey dokey.
I don't think I have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garten for bringing that up.
Sorry about that. Well, let it know.
All right. Mario?
I'd like to take this opportunity to update the board on the 2018 renewal permit for the MS4 program. Back in September of 2016, I wrote a letter basically outlining what needed to be done, and I think we, I gave you a cost estimate of, I think it was $16,000 to $18,000 to do that. To date, we have started the individual, you know, permit application, individual NPDS permit application. We've done the permit checklist, DEP loves checklist. We've updated the township's sewer shed and outfall maps to show all the locations of the outfalls as delineated by GHD. We've shown the locations and the names of all the surface waters that these outfalls flow to, shown the township's storm sewer collection system. We've got municipal boundaries and urbanized areas. We've got land uses on these maps, and we've calculated the storm sewer shed boundaries. And we've also done the calculations of the township's existing pollutant loads, whether they're sediment, nutrients, or phosphorus. The last major component, which has not been started yet, is the total maximum daily load or TMVL plan for sediment and a pollution reduction plan for nutrients for the different watersheds. And the watersheds include the Cooks Run, Pine Run, the Mill Creek, the Nishamene Creek, and the tributary to the Nishamene Creek. At this time, due to, you know, the time constraints and the, you know, manpower, you know, I reached, I determined that I could not finish those plans. I think it was, so I thought it was in the best interest for me to reach out to somebody to be able to finalize and do these plans. And I approached GHD because they've been working on the MS4 program for the last 13, 14 years. They're the ones that go out in the field, do all the outfall screenings and that sort of thing, and, you know, they have something, you know, the mapping of all the outfalls. So I reached out to them, Autumn and I met with them and we discussed them, and they have provided a proposal for the township to do these plans. The plans themselves, well, are how is the township going to reduce the sediment loads going to these watersheds, these streams? I said, "We have calculated the existing pollutant loads." And then, then the Nishamene Creek has a TMVL, again, maximum total daily load plan that shows reductions of sediment in two of those watersheds, one being the Mill Creek and the other one being the Pine Run. As an example, in the Pine Run watershed, the township's going to have to reduce the sediment loads by 50, 58% over the life of the plan. Right now, Mill Creek is 28, a load reduction of 28%. In the other watersheds, Cooks Run and the Nishamene tributary areas, they would have to be reduced 10%. The 10% is over a five-year period. The TMVL reductions, DEP has said if you reduce them 10% over the next several permit terms, the permit terms being five years, you know, they'll accept that. So they're not expecting the whole 58% in the next five years.
What is one permit term? Five years?
Five years. Between 2018 and 2023 is the next permit term.
It might be a good idea if you, because we are on television, you describe what you mean by pollutants. They're not generated by the township government. There are things like farmers powing fields and people putting fertilizers on their lawns, all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, well, the, the main pollutant of concern is sediment. Like you said, it's, you know, erosion off of, you know, off of construction sites, off of lawn areas where, you know, there is no, you know, grass growing and, and it goes into the streams. Now, somebody could say, "Well, yeah, I have my lawn, and my lawn is, you know, small." But when you have, you know, the whole township as a whole, which is, I believe, 10,000 acres, it's a lot of sediment. Just the existing pollutant loads, the township as a whole, I mean, I just took the whole township, put it into the, into the magic box, you know, there are different programs out there. There's three different methods. I just chose, chose one. Believe, if my memory serves me correctly, the existing pollutant load is almost 3 million pounds for Doylestown Township as a whole.
What does it have to be reduced to?
Well, again, it's different watersheds have different, different requirements, and then some areas can be parsed out, taken out, because they, you know, they flow directly into streams. Pendout roadways can be taken out because Pendout is responsible for them, certain other entities that have their own NPDS permits, you can take out. And that's, that is the nuts and bolts of what GHD would be doing, looking at the overall load calculations, you know, looking at the reductions, and then figuring out how the township would be reducing these loads over the next five years. And there's also a cost estimate. The township will get a cost estimate on how much it will cost to do these, you know, best management practices, whether they're rain gardens, retrofitting, detention basins, stream restoration, that sort of thing. These TMVL plans and PRP plans must be submitted with the, the individual permit application by September 16th, 2016, 2017, excuse me. And they've, they require a, like a public participation component similar to an Act 537, where you would need to make the whole plan available to the public, whether it be hard copies here, maybe put it on the website. it be hard copies here, maybe put it on the website. Then we have to publish in a newspaper, an ad basically saying that this plan is available and requesting comments on the plan. We need to take comments, written comments, for a minimum of 30 days. You need to have a meeting. It could be a normal township meeting where we would accept written and verbal comments at that time. We need to then respond to those comments. And then, when we've done all that, submit that to DEP. And DEP has given a deadline of 45 days prior to the issuance, or the due date to make these, like, public notice. So it's, I believe, the deadline for making public notice is August 2nd. So I've put together a preliminary timeline on what we can do with these PRP and TMVL plans. Again, we're still working with GHD to fine tune it, just to make sure we make these dates. But one is to be able to present a draft copy of the plan to the board at your July 18th meeting.
15th?
Authorize advertisement of the final plan at that meeting when it is complete and ready to go, no later than I say August 1st. And then the end of the comment period would be the end of August, and we could hold the public meeting to accept comments at your August 15th meeting. The problem is, going into September, I believe your meeting in September is after the deadline. So we really have to have a special meeting at the end of August or miss the deadline. And everybody that I've talked with, DEP, basically has said, "Don't miss the deadline." They haven't said what would happen if you missed it, but...
For five years.
That is the requirements and where we stand to date. Now, I know GHD did provide a proposal to provide those plans. They actually provided a revised proposal, I believe, yesterday. The only difference in the revised proposal, which is on your table, is that this proposal is now addressed to the township, not our offices. And they kind of cleaned up the understanding of needs a little bit. The proposal is for...
Plus, do we have to do the other stuff?
I looked at the other items. I believe two of the three are probably not needed, the additional mapping and review of the NPDS permit. I don't believe that figure is in the ballpark, so I don't think I would write it. I mean, if we get to the point of having to identify pre-2003 BMPs, I think we would come back to the board. And I'm not sure you would need five days on that either. We do have a listing. The township does have a listing of all the BMPs. We just received them, I said, this week. They were sent to GHD. And that's good, because now we know where there are existing basins that were done in the 90s and the early 2000s, which we could retrofit. And they're the low-hanging fruit, to retrofit those into today's standards to help.
When, if we go forward with this, developing this list of the BMPs to manage and reduce the load, is it also, is there deliverable also the cost to us to implement all those things?
There will be a cost estimate. Obviously, they're not going to be designing the BMPs at the time. They would be over the next five years. But they would say, "We're going to retrofit the detention basins here in Central Park." And we're going to take it from a standard detention basin to a extended detention basin, which then gives you a 60% efficiency on that watershed. So then we, again, do some numbers. We toss in the 60% efficiency. It reduces the load from 1,000 to 400. That's your 60%. So you've got 600 until you come down to the bottom line and we met our goal.
They would also provide an estimate to do that change in the waterways itself.
Yes, that is part of what they would be providing.
Is that $12,500 a reasonable cost for this, if you know?
Actually, I believe it was. I was surprised.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for the review and the explanation.
Just one other question or clarification, especially for me. These changes that we're having to go through to reduce this load on all these streams, what precipitated that? What was it that said, "We have to reduce Nishamene by 58% more than Mexico?"
That was part of a Nishamene Creek TMVL plan, which was done, I guess it's, you know, there is a document out there that took the Nishamene Creek watershed and studied the whole 240, I think, square miles of the Nishamene Creek watershed. And back, as I said, late 90s, early 2000s, they did all the calculations and they broke it up into different sub-water sheds. And they said, "Well, like the Pine Run Creek," they modeled it using some other types of models and said, "The watershed, the creek can take so much sediment." Sediment, you know, and basically it's getting this much sediment, so much more. To get it healthy, you have to reduce it by 58%.
And who's mandating that?
DEP, EPA. EPA is mandating it of DEP. DEP is mandating it of the municipalities.
They're sending the funds to us to do?
Oh, of course.
This is an unfunded mandate.
I was being sarcastic.
And if we did not comply, we just wouldn't get any permits approved or anything else. What happens if we don't do this?
You could get fined upwards of $10,000 a day. And I know a number of municipalities, as you know, we were at PSATs, and there were a number of these presentations. And they had the horror stories of a couple municipalities that had EPA show up on their doorstep and start going through this. And their fines started at around $240,000.
I was being a bit sarcastic, but the public has to realize that we get handed down things that are going to cost $50,000, $60,000, but no funds. And it's unfunded mandate. And after a while, it becomes a lot of money.
That's cheap. $50,000, $60,000.
This is just the study stuff that's resting that one. I mean, Mr. Snyder brought up a good point, Mario, and that is, is that when GHD comes back and says to retrofit basin A, B, C, or D, that's going to be costly in and of itself, am I not?
That is correct. And I've said it since back in 2017. And I know that the board were doing their budgeting for this year. I know that they were requesting budget numbers to do this. And I said at the time, I really couldn't give you one. But now, at least going into 2018, for the next five years, there will be some budget numbers to work with.
Mr. Tomko, you have some questions?
Yeah, compensation, little concern. Mario, maybe you can clarify. It says perform on a cost-plus basis. According to GHD's current fee schedule, which fee schedule is that?
I do not know. GHD right now has a...
We have a current contract.
I know, we have a current contract, but if this is a separate contract, an addendum to that contract, it should probably be stated as such, an addendum to our current contract, maybe, as opposed, or if it's a standalone, then that should be attached. And instead of, it should be time material or a lump sum.
It references a copy enclosed. I just don't think we have it.
Okay. Why didn't see it in the other...
Maybe it wasn't reproduced. It could be...
We have that, right?
Yeah.
I'll make sure. Plus, the cost pluses can always get you, either it's a lump sum or time material. That's all, just a question on that.
I'm sure that we can get that clarified.
Well, it says the charging is $12,500.
An estimated.
Estimated. I don't like estimated either. We can always cap it at 12.5. No more than. But billing will be monthly, and the method of monthly billing will be based on actual hours plus any reimbursable expenses, such as mileage copying. That's what I asked about the add-on costs. So we're not doing those right now. We don't have to. They're all good concerns. Anything else?
That's it on that.
And this contract is with the township, so it isn't even going through our office.
I'm not questioning the content of it. It's just that Section 10 compensation, that's all.
Will you see the output, though?
Oh, yes. We're working, we're working hand-in-hand with them. It's just, you know, don't want them, you know, we don't want to get them as a subcontractor, where then they bill us. We would just pass it along, since there's already a contract with the township.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the GHD contracts for the proposal for engineering services for our PRP TMVL plan? Do you like that?
Second.
Okay, second. Just one question. You mentioned, do we want to put a cap on it? Do we want to put a cap on it?
Well, you could say not to exceed without further approval of the board.
Point question, yeah.
Yeah. All right. So the contract is...
With that.
The motion is to accept the contract with the caveat that not to exceed 12.5 without approval from the board. First approval. All right. There's a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Voila. Where are we? To Director of Operations.
Okay, just a quick update on the project. Multiple, as everyone may know, but I'll go over the project itself. It's two phases. Phase one is large evidence storage for the police department and their vehicles. Fleet Maintenance Building, the Public Works Building. Phase two is the Administration and Police Building and the Park and Rec Center Building up off of New Britton Road. We have signed contracts and had a pre-construction meeting on June 1st for Phase one. We anticipate the construction to begin later this month, early July. So we'll see mobilization on this site moving forward. There will be parking restrictions. They will be noted. Signs will be put up. Barricades. We'll do our best to protect the public because they are in and out of this building, doing business with the township. So I just wanted to make that comment. And we will work with anybody that's got questions. We'll have accessibility to handicap parking. It may be out front as opposed to on the side, but we'll work diligently and make sure that the site is safe and with the contractor, the general contractor and all their subs and such. Phase two is moving forward with design development, with the architectural plans, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, interior design, and the site work that is moving forward. And we have basically, the trailers are going to be on-site starting tomorrow on the basketball courts. Basketball courts, as Barbara, you reported, are closed for the duration of the project. The tennis courts are open and will remain open, though accessibility may be barricaded off and signage will be posted. And so they may be closed during certain hours of operation for protection of the public. Just wanted to make that comment. Pre-construction meeting was held with Mod Space, and we're moving forward. So that will happen as we move forward. So that's scheduled. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay.
What's move-in date to the trailers?
Move-in date temporarily would be the end of July. Actually, technically, I should state is their schedule would be, actually, I'm sorry, mid-July, July 14th would be, Mod Space, who is the supplier of the trailers, would turn those over to us, so we could start moving in.
So that month is doing infrastructure, getting electrical, plumbing, and everything else.
I'm sorry.
Starting, I'm sorry, Ken.
No, that month, if they're coming tomorrow and you're moving in the middle of July, that's a month to get them situated on-site and get the electrical, plumbing, and everything else all hooked up and stuff like that.
Correct. Right, correct. Okay. That's all on the building.
Can I just ask one more scheduling question? The Cyentino Committee is looking to do a wrecking ball, the wrecking ball, the week after Labor Day. Is that too late for you? Or do you want to be crashing before Labor Day?
When can we wreck the building?
Yeah, we want to wreck the building. Like, I'm thinking like that Friday, the 8th. Is that a possibility? Or Thursday, the 7th?
I think he needs to come back to you.
Yeah, we may have to. We'll come back. I don't think that, foresee that as a problem. We're tentative looking at the actual demolition starting in October.
Oh, October.
October. So, but again...
I thought it was September.
Well...
You moved it.
It's still in flux. I mean, again, knowing the components of the building and site work, now things can move quickly, quicker, I should say. But that's really kind of what our construction management company has down as far as a tentative date. It's in flux a little bit.
It could be a phase thing.
But again, we could be looking to be out of this building in August and transitioning out of this building, so that might fall in line. We don't want to be having that event and then, you know, the next day, then they're knocking stuff down.
We'd like to lock down a date, so...
Yeah, and we can work with schedules.
Thank you.
Okay. Couple items on for your review, discussion, and approval is the pre-demolition hazardous material inspection and testing proposal. We asked J.D. Bravo and Company, our construction management company, to obtain proposals for hazardous material inspection and testing on this current building, the Admin Police Building itself. They solicited three proposals. The Vertex Companies Incorporated was the low bidder. They were vetted by J.D. Bravo, and there was a recommendation from Mr. Rob Galant to accept their proposal in the amount of $1,800.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the contract with Vertex?
Move to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Second proposal is revisiting our fuel tank purchase. This purchase will be made through the NJPA, the National Joint Powers Alliance. Contract tank is an above-ground storage tank totaling 6,000 gallons. It'll be a split tank, 4,000 for gas, 2,000 for diesel. It'll be located in the island behind this building. We've worked with Mario, with our architects, to work that layout. It will be purchased from Easy Fuel Blue One USA. And that is the amount of $163,687.
Yeah, I appreciate that this is an NJPA contract, but were there other bids?
We looked at Co-Stars, and that was originally what we were going to go with Pine Run Construction and look at purchasing through Co-Stars. And what we found out, there was some miscommunication with Pine Run as to having a Co-Stars contract, because Pennsylvania, the state of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania doesn't purchase fuel systems anymore. So therefore, there's no fuel system, distribution systems on their state purchasing contracts, on the Co-Stars contract. So that's one of the reasons why we had gone through and joined NJPA, because there's a greater purchasing power, and that is why.
There are no purchasing alternatives? I mean, there are the lesser fuel supplier gallon, diesel guys.
We could have gone to a public bid, but this amount is in line with what Pine Run Construction was going to, what their bid was.
Okay. This is the same company that Newtown Township?
And Newtown Township has purchased through a fuel system from Easy Fuel Blue One USA and through NJPA.
Is this all the components for this fuel station?
This is everything. So this includes the tank, you know, it's got its, the nomenclature, fire guard system, fuel management system, the VITR root monitoring system. So it has all the components to it. And it's outlined in the attached proposal.
Pretty detailed. Don't you think?
And NJPA, I understand some of it. The numbers on NJPA are as a result of bidding.
Right. And, yeah, correct.
They bid at national.
NJPA is a national bid.
That was my question. We've got a national bid.
Correct. Not just a...
Does this also include the removal of our tanks?
No, that will then go through. But we're going to turn that around and put that onto the demolition contract, because that will include site work.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Easy Fuel Blue Number One USA NJPA awarded contract?
Move to approve.
The fuel tank. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Last one.
Actually, is the generator proposal for the fleet maintenance building. Currently, fleet maintenance is tied to the generator of this building. So if power goes down, our fleet maintenance still has power. With the, moving the fleet maintenance to the rear of this property, we need to purchase another unit. This proposal was obtained based on a recommendation from Smith Miller Associates, who is on the project team under Phillips and Donovan, worked with Rick Shea, worked with them, and obtained the proposal from Penn Power Systems for an MTU Onsite Energy 600, sorry, 60-kilowatt diesel fuel generator. This is a Co-Stars purchase. Same thing. That's part of a bidding system, and therefore we can contract with them directly. Purchase price is $31,422.
All right. And Rick Shea knows his generators, I can tell you that. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
So fleet, this is the backup generator proposal. $31,422. All in favor?
Aye.
Just one small note on that.
Thank you.
When the signature one, the dates will change on that, Stephanie?
I asked Jackie to revise them, so hopefully the original's...
Good catch.
I caught it, too.
Wow. Good follow-up, Supervisor Snyder. All right. Travis Mannion requests for a fee... I thought we didn't pass on this.
No, you did not.
We just circulated the request.
Right. They're circulating...
Right. Their circulated information was shared based on a request from that organization utilizing Central Park. They're working on a PSA, actually. I believe taping's occurring today. Originally, it was going to occur earlier. This went through Karen Sweeney, our Parks and Recreation Director, in their application. They're asking for a reduction in the fee as a nonprofit organization from 1,000 to 500. And obviously, staff is now enabled to reduce those fees, so we have to bring it to the board.
And we have done this in the past, so it's just a question if we do it in this particular... I'm fine with it.
Make a motion to approve the fee waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And one extension. I hope it goes well. Well, it's not raining, so... There's 200 kids over there right now, so... How wonderful. Well, good luck with it. Thanks. We'll get you out of there, so you can look at what's going on over there. All right. What else?
One other item.
Thank you.
Is the recommendation from the Ways and Means on the defined benefit pension plans. And we're using a cost-averaging basis. As everyone knows, when we get our MMOs and the money comes in from the state, we typically make those investments in the fall, so later in the year. It's been recommended that we do that on a quarterly basis. And so the recommendation to the board is to move forward and begin to make those pension payments quarterly versus waiting to the end of the year.
Okay.
We just want consensus from the board that we're okay to move ahead and do that.
Yeah, absolutely. We tried to do it last year, but didn't quite make it through, so I support it this year.
Did a... All right. You're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Supervisor's comments. Sean?
Just one. Thank you. From the EAC, just an update on what's going on with the group. May 27th, we had 13 volunteers and over 500 plants added to the native plant garden. Currently, EAC is working on expansion of the native plant garden. They've come to the park and rec committee and coordinating that with them, expanding out from existing bounds of where that sits. Our next cleanup is June 24th. That's going to be held from 9 to 11. And just to recap, we'll have more info on this later, but the park recycling event was, June 3rd, was well-attended, but we're waiting for a report on volume of what was recycled. Maurice Jones, the head of that group, will give us a report in upcoming months, but might even come out and give a report, so...
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Just one other thing, that in addition to what Dave was talking about, the building, we also got our ferrencies approved by zoning back in May, which was a good thing, so we can move forward with all the stuff.
We can actually build now.
Now we can build, yeah. So that was a good thing. And just a, in addition to what Stephanie was talking about, the pension funds, the pension committee had their meeting and some other members of the Ways and Means with the actuaries and really drilling down into the details. And now, next, they're going to have a meeting with their investment advisor. So this pension subcommittee is really digging into it, so they're doing some good work. So all this is going to come together shortly.
All right. Anything more?
I don't.
Ken? Ken, sorry. You don't look anything like Ken.
Well, let's just leave it at that. Just a couple of comments. Wasn't able to get a quorum on the planning commission, so three of the members cannot make it, so that is why you see a couple of extensions, or at least one extension later on in the agenda here. Still trying to get all the water meters converted in the township. We still have a few people who are waiting to the last minute, hoping there will be a discount, but there's not. So please, if you haven't made the conversion, that letter you're getting in the mail, we'd appreciate if you'd answer, so we can get out there and make the conversion. And the last thing is, you know, Dave Tomko walked into a buzzsaw, you know? And I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank him. He's really grabbed the ball. He's been running with it. He's running in seven different directions and doing a good job, so kudos for, you know, picking up the ball and getting things accomplished.
Peter?
You stole a little bit of what I wanted to say. Ken Snyder and I have been working pretty detailed with the building plan and expansion. And to everybody, and my fellow supervisors, I can't tell you how impressive Dave Tomko is and Rick Shea, their expertise, their attention to details, their organization, their professionalism, they're always prepared and they're ahead of the game. So I just, you two are doing such a bang-up job. I can't imagine doing this project without you two and running the team here. Well, Stephanie, too, but she's always good. But no, you guys...
I'm making them do it.
The, what you guys do and what you do is, you do it so well, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
I really appreciate it.
Hey, the biggest office in the new municipal...
Yeah, definitely. Well, you certainly...
You get the window.
Right now, he and Keith Hodge share a little space like this. It's funny, just trying, don't, you know...
It's only one.
Interrupt them, but you can't help it, because you have to walk through their office to get to here. It's really... Okay. Eagle Scout proclamation, Jose Donawalt, 224. Congratulations. Is there a motion to approve his proclamation?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is the request to hook up 98 Shady Grove Circle. Everyone had a chance to review the application. Is there any question? All in favor? Is there a motion to approve the application, 98? 98 Shady Grove Circle?
I'll second that.
Good. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Request from Kellen Gallon on the...
Hospital.
Did I miss something? Hospital, yes. Doylestown Hospital Plan, planning, blah, blah. So they needed an extension, and they're asking us to give them one, so is there a motion to approve that?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, again, David Callen and his project, he wants a 90-day extension on the Callen track. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And these are because the planning commission has not had a...a lot of them?
Well, no, it was just the one meeting that Doylestown Hospital had to extend, because it was, they were up against a deadline. Callen and some other issues, but they also need the extension.
All right.
It's just the timing and the meeting schedule, too.
Okay.
Memorial Day and just, we got a...
Yeah. June, late June. That's where it was. It's later in June.
Okay. All right. We have auditor services necessary for two projects, the Greenways Trails, and the other is the municipal recycling program. And Major Mastro have, they're going to be doing the work, and we need approval of these two letters of intent to do the work for these two audits. Is there a motion to approve them both?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Treasurer's report for June 6, 2017 was sent to you electronically.